Okay, good evening, everyone. Before we start our regular meeting, I'd like to ask for a motion to come out of the executive session, if I might.
So.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, also, a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session, please. I go, a motion and second?
Second.
To seal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, thank you. Mrs. George, your call, please, for the town council meeting.
Glenn Shugley.
I'm here.
Jennifer Bosonier.
Here.
Carrie McGee.
Here.
Karen Promison.
Here.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
William Waters.
President.
Mr. Score.
Here.
Okay, and Mr. Sprenner, I see we have a hundred guests here.
My man from Tube 11, Matthew of Alphatahmo.
Matthew, am I correct?
Close.
Very good, well, thank you for coming today. You're gonna start us off on the Pledge of Allegiance, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. While we're standing, we could just bow our heads in a moment of prayer. Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance this meeting, as we begin our monthly meeting for July. We ask for help for our families, friends, and all our residents in Coventry, and we pray for your guidance as well. Amen. And vacuums. You, Mr. Sprenner?
Case for emergency, the actives to the rear, we just go to your right or left. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, President's comments. I have a few. As far as, first, regarding the agenda itself, for those that are interested, the Certificates of Recognition for Completion of a Certain Training will not be held tonight. It will be held, actually, on the August 21st meeting. So, that'll just have to be lined out of your agenda tonight. Also, regarding Reference 11, which is under O, Proposed Revisions to Chapter 204 Regarding Solid Ways, that is, may have to be held for a future meeting. So, we will not be under O, that will be lined out as well. Now, on the move-ups, Mr. Gorm, do we cover that right now?
That's fine.
Shall we?
Sure.
Also, I would like for the permission of my fellow council people. It's been requested to move the item N2, which is for Discussion and/or Action, the approval of the Delinquent Collection Service Contract Discussion, up to where it'll follow, right behind following the C pace, so that our town officials can speak together on both those matters. And the only other move I've been requested to make is the P, the Public Hearing Section, for the Licensed Businesses and the Alcoholic Beverages. That's been asked to move up to, right before we begin the discussion and action on the solar ordinances, right before N1. So, those two will, hopefully, with no objection, we'll just move those two up. Last-minute request, but I think it's doable. So, I would like a couple personal or comments regarding, one, our condolences to the family of Agnes LaPointe, who passed away on July 14th, 27th, at the age of 87. Those that knew Agnes, she was a distinguished lady, involved in politics and community service for over 40 years in Coventry. Served as a former councilwoman in Coventry in the middle 80s. I served with her from '84 to '86. She also was a parishioner at St. John, St. Paul's Parish for over 50 years, and just a classy lady. So, our condolences go out to her family. Upcoming events this weekend, I just wanted to mention a couple. We have gotten some flyers. Saturday, July 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the General Nathaniel Green Homestead, they're gonna have a celebration for the 275th birthday of Major General Nathaniel Green. The ceremony itself begins at 2:00. 2 to 3, they'll have a guest speaker, Brigadier General, retired Richard Valenti, followed by complimentary birthday cake, refreshments, and a cannon salute by the Rhode Island militia. And all day long is the free tours and an open house of the property. So, that's this coming Saturday. Also, on Saturday, we have in Coventry the Fourth Annual Ryan J. Parkridge Memorial Car Show and Pig Roast. Ryan was a skilled automotive mechanic and graduate of Coventry High School. This is a memorial event. It's on, it's gonna be held at 1786 Flat River Road. The admission is $15 for adults, $5 for children 12 and under, children 5 and under are free. And they're gonna have music, lawn games, cards, show awards, a raffle, and it's all to raise money to pass along to assist our high school students in vocational fields pursue their careers. That is also on Saturday. And on Sunday, must be a car weekend, because we have our Third Annual Coventry Custom Car, Motorcycle, and Truck Show, Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., right here behind the Coventry Town Hall with the Cowboy Cruisers. It's gonna be a great day, hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and all proceeds will go to the Coventry Human Services and the Ronald McDonald House. And that's it for my announcements tonight. Thanks for bearing with me. Next on the agenda, as we've eliminated K, I'd like to ask for approval for the Town Council Minutes of June 26th, if I might have a motion?
Second.
Second.
A little discussion, I noticed.
Discussion, okay.
Couple of things that may have been, actually, it's regarding Mr. McGee. On approving Hazard Street Sewer Project, it says in here that he was, he is comfortable recommending CB utility. I thought that was distinctly uncomfortable.
I didn't catch that, yeah. No, I was not comfortable.
That's what I, that's what I thought it was. I said it was uncomfortable.
We did not give it to them.
It looked like there was a large space between "is" and "comfortable," so I figured there was room for "un."
That's on page 3, number 5.
Page 3, number 5.
The first paragraph, or, I guess, the fifth line down. You have become uncomfortable.
Yes.
Anything else?
Yes, and there's one other item at the, at the top of page 6. It looks like, it says, a motion was made by Councilor Bosonier, a second of Mr. McGee, vote taken, was 2 to 3. As far as I remember, it was 1 to 4.
Vote taken?
It was, it said 2 ayes, 3 opposed. But I thought it was, and again, it's, I think it's assuming that Mr. McGee voted yes, and I just wanna make sure that, if that was the case, it's fine. If not, I, my thoughts were that it was 1 to 4. Top of, top of 6. Top of?
Page 6.
Top of page 6. I know there was a second in there, but I didn't recall whether it was 2 ayes or 1 ayes. Just wanted to.
Yeah, that was, it's correct.
It is, it is correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure of that. So, that's correct, and the other change is uncomfortable, that's all.
So, it should be 4 ayes, 3 opposed?
No.
No.
It's right.
No, it's cor, it's correct.
It's right the way it is?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so it's right and right. I do have one, on page 1, where President's comments, extended condolences, I believe that should be Captain Dennis Skorsky and his family on the recent loss of money. I think it said lieutenant. It is?
It is captain.
Right, I do believe I had captain down, too. So, that'd be a correction on page 1. Other than that, no other changes, we have a motion to accept the minutes.
There was a motion, second, so.
Okay, motion, accept that, and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion is passed, and we are on, past the minutes. Okay, council updates. Mr. McGee, District 3, please.
Yeah, I haven't had much on District 3. Just a few questions again about street sweeping in our district, because you ended the list, so any constituents out on District 3, they are coming, I believe, this week, if I'm not mistaken, Kevin. So, street sweeping is ongoing process, and it is on the list, it's gonna happen this week. And besides that, we've had a few issues, a few questions about speeding around the Black Rock, Sheriff's Street area, it's a tough area, the cars go very fast, so I've spoken to the chief, and we're hoping to work on that, and it's tough to make the people slow down, unfortunately, it ends up being the neighbors that live in the area that wants it to speeding, but the people wanna see them slow down, as I do, and hopefully we can, we can do something about that. Besides that, everything's going good in District 3. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baker?
I have, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Carlson, District 1.
Okay, so, good evening, everybody. We're back to fall, apparently, because this is cold. And anyway, people have been getting their tax bills. Okay, we all have seen those white envelopes contain those pieces of pink paper that we're just mostly not thrilled with. If you object to your assessment, please know you have recourse until November, is that right? You can go to the Tax Assessment Board, and you can appeal your assessment. So, know that there is something you can do about it. I have other comments, but they relate to other items on the agenda, so I will wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bosonier, District 2.
The only update, I've actually just got a question, and it's regarding, we've got a, the asphalt pavement program, when I had some folks in, asking, I'm gonna ask Mr. McGee about it, and a guy couldn't tell him. Whitehead Road, is that on the new, with the new contract? If it is, it's gonna be there. Okay, great, thanks, because it, that was the only question I had. Thank you.
Okay, very good. District 4, I'm gonna not make any comments tonight, we'll have other things coming up earlier, or later on tonight. So, updates are completed. Next, we have the School Department Report, I believe, oh, Mr. Levis is here to do the School Department Report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm fine, and we're all fine here tonight. How are you? That's.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you. So, I'll try to be brief, since I write these, and I know there's a lot of feedback about the length of my report, so I'll try to abbreviate. The first thing is just, I wanna let the committee know that the council, that Mr. Joseph Lucian has been appointed as principal of the Allen Sean Feinstein Middle School. Dr. Lisi retired after 28 years. He's going to be the principal of the Monsignor Clark Elementary School in Wakefield, and we wanna thank him for his years of service to Coventry and in his new leadership position. And with, with, with Mr. Lucian going to the middle school, we also have Mrs. Ozzy Novolucci, who was an assistant principal for two years at the high school, and she's moved over as an assistant principal at the middle school. So, we have a new leadership team there, and we're excited about the opportunities. And another change going on is Ms. Louise Sight Singer, she's going to be the new Assistant Superintendent for the North Providence Public Schools. So, her resignation will be accepted this Thursday night, and at our school committee meeting, and we wanna congratulate her on this promotion and for her service. I know she was a teacher in Coventry, then left for another community, then came back and has been principal at Ty Oak. And so, again, those are some changes going on with leadership. Second thing I wanna talk about is just, if you've been to Western Coventry, you know that we have, the water fountains have trash bags over them. There's been a purification issued there for many, many years, and we're actually, that's being addressed as we speak, you know, using the impact fees that we received, and that should be completed, so individuals will be actually able to drink the water in the water fountains. Right now, we have pulling springs water throughout the building, so that's something that we've addressed. And another thing I wanted to, and thank, Mr. Kevin McGee in the Department of Public Works, has been working with Jason Martin, and we are gonna address the Hopkins Hill sand dune issue. Actually, there's been, I believe, topsoil that's been taken from across the street in terms of the putting, for the bus depot that's gonna go behind the annex, and that's been placed over there, and he did, put together a great proposal in terms of how we can reclaim a lot of that property and using that, and so, we're gonna make sure that that gets taken care of before the start of school. And I wanna thank, again, Jason Martin, our Director of Facilities, and Mr. McGee for working together. The other, the other portion is, we all know with the state aid not being, the budget being passed, it put us in a situation where we have a cash flow issue. And so, we met with, myself and our Director of Finance, Sarah Minterelli, met with Mr. Tebow and Mr. Waters, and we appreciate their support, as always, and we worked out a scenario where, that will make sure that we have the cash flow through December, at least, and hoping that, you know, we're hoping that the budget, I know they were supposed to meet today, so we'll see what comes out of that. But again, I wanna thank the town engine and your Director of Finance for working with us. And then finally, we partnered with the Green School, which is a charter school in West Greenwich. We have 40 students, 40 Coventry residents go to the Green School, and, you know, a lot of superintendents, you know, are against charter schools and talk about the funding, but I look at, they're our residents, there's a lot of things that the Green School does that we don't do that well, or we could benefit from. There's a lot of resources and things that we do that they could benefit from. So, this past year, we've been in a lot of conversations with them, and looking at how we can create win-win scenarios, and they went out to the Renal Foundation, and part, we partnered with them, because Renal Foundation was looking for a school district in the state and a charter school that were willing to work together. So, they received a $70,000 grant that we're partnering with, and that grant's gonna be used for working on Algebra 1 for our middle school and our grade 9 students. We have a lot of students that, that struggle with the Algebra 1, it can be very difficult for students, but it's something that they need to, to master, to pass. So, we're gonna be working with the Green School and their teachers on really developing high-quality assessments that really should drive the instruction. And we're excited about that. We're also excited that we're gonna be working also with their teachers on, around English Language Arts and History. And again, we're gonna focus on 9th grade in that transition year coming to the high school, and really focus on a high-quality assessment. So, I appreciate the opportunity with the Green School and with the Rhode Island Foundation. So, we're, again, we're excited about that partnership and working together. That's the report. If anybody has any questions or?
Any, any questions of the council? Mr. Levis? I just have one comment, you know, there's a lot of movement in the school, a lot of good opportunities, and it speaks well of Coventry's school system, where they're reaching out and grabbing our top professionals, but we're also moving up our top professionals. So, it's actually a feeding system, and that's good. It speaks, I think, well for our entire school system. And please congratulate the individuals that have retired and moving on. I have read about it in the Kent County Times, and I know, I've met Mr. Lisi several times, you know, and I know what a great job he's done over the years in middle school, so I know he'll do well in his next assignment, too. So, thank you, Mr. Levis.
Thank you.
And continue the good work, and I'll, we'll be seeing you.
Sure.
This is August, I guess.
Thank you.
Coming up. Okay. Next, we have Jay, our Building Committee update, Recommendation for Architectural Services, Police Department, and Human Services Building. I see our Chairman of the Building Committee, Mr. Bill Finnegan here, as well as his capable Assistant Charlie, and Charlie, how do you pronounce your last name?
Woskowitz.
Woskowitz. I know you, I shop at days with you, but, and again, two of the four members are here tonight. I'm sorry, Julie, is she in the back? That's three, did I miss anybody else?
Julie.
Yeah, I know, Julie Uletti, okay. Well, Mr. Finnegan, I'm sorry for the delay, three out of the four are here tonight, so it builds all, all yours.
Okay, thank you. The only, the only member we're missing is Tom Heatherman, who couldn't make it tonight. So, we put together the PowerPoint, Julie put this together, to sort of bring everyone up to speed as to where we're at in the process, and we hope to leave tonight with the resolution to award the Architectural Services tomorrow. So, we started this back in May, we put together an RFP to go out to bid for the Human Services and Police Facility. We had a pre-bid walkthrough, where all of the bidders, there were 14 that attended the pre-bid meeting to walk through the facility and ask any questions they may have. We wanted to make sure everybody had as much information as they could, and everybody was on equal footing as much as we could, and to get the most complete package that we could obtain. After that, we had, we offered in a walkthrough of the existing police department to let them see the facility in action and ask any additional questions they may have, and then we had a public bid opening on June 9th, which they were all, all the bids were open. There were nine bidders, and right here, you see Sakoshio was the low apparent bidder, and it went all the way up to an $828,000 bid. And as we said in the RFP, the committee would, after we had the open bid, we would, after we opened the bid, rather, we would meet with the low, three, apparent low qualified three bidders. So, we met with Sakoshio, Edward Rouse, and Torado. They came in, and we reviewed their proposal and asked each of them, the committee asked them a series of questions. So, they came in, the three bidders, after, after we had that meeting, we felt there was a little bit of unclarity as far as the road access, that we, we thought people weren't clear whether they should have included it or not included it, so we wanted to meet with them again to qualify, or we wanted to go back out to them to get clarification on the road access. We also removed the adult daycare portion of the building, that was in the original proposal, so that was about 7,500 square feet. So, when we went back out to the three low bidders, we asked them to offer us their best and final with the reduction of the 7,500-feet clarification on the road access. We wanted each of them to commit or clarify what their involvement was going to be as far as obtaining grant money for different grant opportunities that we have for both sides of the project. We wanted to know what they expected, what size the building would be, we wanted a semi-firm commitment out of them, what they could provide, because a couple of the proposals were a little vague. We wanted them to confirm that they could get bid, construction bid packages out by January of 2018, so that we could go and get into construction in the spring of 2018. We didn't wanna go out to, well, a couple of the firms originally were gonna go out to bid in June, well, April to June of 2018, and we felt, from a timing and a pricing standpoint, that wasn't to our advantage, so. So, all three of them came back, and on June 30th, all three sent back their best and final offerings. And Sakoshio, who was the original low bid at 577, 577,500, which included the road, he offered a new proposal at 577,5 plus 17,000 for the, for the road design. Rouse came back in with the low bid, and the same price that he offered when we went out for the first bid, he gave us a 20 to $24,000 range for the road, so he maintained that. And Torado came back with a reduction in their overall fee price because of the reduction in square footage, but Torado isn't a firm price, it's a 7% of construction cost. So, that, he, so, that's what it came out to, but we felt that Torado was gonna be a higher number if it was awarded to them anyways, but they were the high bid, high bidder at this point. There was one question with Sakoshio, I called them to clarify while the committee was meeting to discuss what the price adder was, and they added in, like Torado did, an industry, what they felt was an industry expert that had a lot of police design work experience throughout the country. So, the justification Sakoshio had for increasing his price was because he brought that service in, it was an additional expense. So, we had a lengthy discussion, and all three of these bidders were certainly qualified, they've all done recent work, exactly what we're looking for, there was no reason to disqualify any one of them. So, the recommendation by the committee is gonna be to award it to the low bidder, Edward Rouse, at $594,000. So, does anybody have any questions or comments, or?
Well, I've been hearing this as we're going, because I'm the one member on the Advisory Board, not, not on the Building Committee, but I know that you've been keeping the entire committee, and through, you know, emails, we've all been, you know, made aware of the prices along the way, and I think you've done a very, very good job. I, I don't know if you wanna mention, if you have in front of you, but the different public safety complexes that your recommendation has, you know, been successful with. I know I was impressed, I think it was four or five, six, mentioned at our last meeting, but maybe, in case the council members don't know that. I know you said the Rehoboth Public Safety Complex was, I think, most recent, but do you have the list, Mr. Finnegan, of the others? I think I can mention a few if, if you don't.
I do.
Okay.
So, in their bid proposal, they referenced the Rehoboth Public Safety Complex, the Hopkins Inn Police Station, the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office, the Public Safety Building in North Kingston.
Right.
They did a US Federal Building and Courthouse, Charleston Police.
Right.
State of Rhode Island Traffic Tribunal, they were not involved in the computer upgrade. Renovations and additions at the Newport Naval Base, Dono W. Wyatt Detention Center, Rhode Island State House.
I think that's, that's good.
And all three bidders had, had very comparable experience.
Okay, all right. Members of the council, any questions of Mr. Finnegan, or the other members here at this time?
Very thorough, thank you.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
I do have one. I did see a, I guess it's your minutes of your meeting on June 20th, and I thought, I mean, I know we worked with Torado for the school bond.
Yes.
And the building, and all that stuff that you all did. But I thought it was interesting that, under Torado, it said they're looking to build a facility for the next 50 years. It would include a 50-year master plan. I really like that. I mean, I know Torado's not getting it yet, but I really like the idea that perhaps that's something to consider, too, because I know it's long to discuss that if we had a bigger space, say, the old Kmart, Almac property, that at some point, maybe this could become a municipal complex, and not just two, but I don't know if that's something they, they would.
Well, that, that comment was from, we were discussing the inclusion of the AD, the firm ADG, which was the outside expert that Torado included, and in their presentation to us, they talked about that it really wasn't a space issue, it was more of a technology and a future requirements, and they felt, I felt anyways, that they brought an awful lot to the table in that discussion. In our subsequent interviews, we felt that all three bidders were equally qualified, and we will have that, I'm confident that we're gonna end up with that long-term plan and that facility.
Yeah, I'm not saying that it's not a good choice, I'm just saying- Yeah, I'm not saying that it's not a good choice, I'm just saying that I really like that idea, because I've kind of been asking, and I did send you an email about moving the teen center in, because I'm really concerned that the teen center is not up to where it should be at this point, and that a new facility incorporating that, maybe a DHS would have worked, but I guess you gave up that extra space, you know?
Well, we're going to build a police, we were charged with, what we're charged with.
I know, I know, thank you.
Okay, anyone else, Mr. Finnegan? Okay, well, thank you, sir, and the committee, and we will hopefully take it on later on tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, next on the Agenda K, we have a presentation by Eric Weiss of the, is it Cogent, is that his name?
Cogent.
Cogent, Cogent Consulting, on the proposal of a bike plan, and I guess, Mr. Waters, you'll start us off on this one?
Yeah, so, when council hired me, one of the things that I was charged with, helping out with, was to identify opportunities for the town to sort of put Coventry on the map, make people want to come to Coventry and make it a destination. I ran into Mr. Weiss at the Rhode Island League of Cities this past, twenty sixteen, was it? No, it was twenty seventh.
January?
Yeah, January. He did, he was, he was a partial presenter on a transportation program that they had, and he talked about bicycle transportation and bicycle opportunities. Knowing that we have the Greenway that runs through town, I figured it'd be a great opportunity to start to facilitate, facilitate some conversation around making Coventry more of a bike-friendly community, and really capitalizing on that opportunity to help identify the town with biking, and making it a biking destination. So, tonight's presentation by Mr. Weiss, who's the founder of Cogent, is a bicycle, pedestrian mobility planner, with twenty years of experience, broad background in biking, pedestrian research, as well as many, many other qualifications. Feel free to talk about him if you'd like, but turn the floor to Mr. Weiss to go through a presentation about the advantages of making Coventry a bicycle-friendly community.
Well, thank you, Graham.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you to all the, all the members of the council for having me tonight. By way of introduction, supplementing what Graham mentioned, I have lived in Rhode Island for about twenty years, although I wasn't born and raised here. For most of the time I've been here, I was running the trail program for an organization called the East Coast Greenway Alliance, and if any of you spend time going up and down the Coventry Greenway and the Trestle Trail, you've probably seen little signs that say "East Coast Greenway." That's the three thousand mile route for walking and biking, connecting cities from Maine to Florida. And in that job, I also had the great pleasure of working with Guy LaFave here in the town of Coventry, who I can say, without exaggeration, is one of the finest people I worked with between, between Maine and Florida. I have a certified planner, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. My specialty is transportation planning, and in particular, bicycle and pedestrian transportation, so sort of a niche within a niche, and so also professional memberships include the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals, the American Planning Association, Congress for the New Urbanism. So those are my bona fides, and I'm very happy to be here tonight to walk through some slides with you, demonstrating some simple things, and some things that maybe are not quite as simple, that the town of Coventry can do to take advantage of existing infrastructure and expand on it to make a more bike-friendly community, and what that would mean for the future of the town. There we go. So I'm going to focus tonight primarily on the economic, economic advantages. I don't need to spend time talking about advantages to personal or public health of getting more people out there on bikes and more people out walking, that's all sort of obvious stuff. Primarily, though, talking about the economic advantages, which are not always as obvious. The first and most readily apparent is the advantage to real estate costs, values, I should say, of being adjacent to bicycle and pedestrian amenities. A home that's in a neighborhood with sidewalks is of higher value, and homes that are adjacent to bike paths, you go anywhere around the country and you'll see, you know, little placards like that on the real estate for sale signs, and perhaps you've seen them here in Coventry as well, for homes that are near the Greenway. And in fact, I pulled this slide, this image off of the Brady Sullivan website, the renting lofts here in town at Historic Anthony Mill, which, you know, in and of itself, is an amazing edifice, what a great place to live. I want to bring your attention down to the text. The first paragraph there is all about historic nature of the building, and the second paragraph is where they get into why you should want to live here. And before getting into things like granite countertops and stainless steel refrigerators, the very first sentence is about what are the amenities, the recreational amenities right there, and mentioning the Washington Secondary Trail, which as you probably know is the overall name of the trail as it exists from Providence to the Connecticut line. Now, in addition to creating that value for the people that live here, we should also be talking about how do we get people from outside the town to ride that trail into town? People from elsewhere along the trail, but also from towns north and south, to come here on their rides, with their wallets, stop for lunch, or to fuel up at a cafe before continuing on their way. And just a couple of statistics about why you might want to bring more cyclists into I have this piece here from Toronto, a study from Toronto, individuals with annual incomes over a hundred thousand dollars were three times more likely to be recreational or utilitarian cyclists than those with annual incomes under twenty thousand. So, you know, this is not necessarily a one-to-one correlation, there could be all sorts of reasons, you know, maybe they, maybe their neighborhoods have better paved streets or something like that, but these are statistics that are worth paying attention to. Here in the US, in two thousand and five, which was the last year I was able to get data from, people who say that they bike frequently had a median income of about sixty thousand dollars, which is about seventy-five thousand dollars in today's dollars. So we've got to get those people here into Coventry to spend their money. How are we going to do that? How are we going to capture those customers? Bring them in and capture them? Well, you've already got some of that infrastructure, right? The town has spent a couple decades putting the Coventry Greenway together, and then the state, of course, is building out the Trestle Trail. In a couple of years, it's going to be built all the way out to the Connecticut line. On the Connecticut side, it's a state park already, and they're talking about improving the surface there, bringing it out about five miles through Lucip and Sterling into Well, there are some, some pretty easy things that we can do to capture those customers, and some of them might seem kind of obvious, such as putting out signage. Now, I've talked with people who've biked the entire length of the trail, and did not know that there's a general store at the end. They're packing their lunches, they're packing all of their Gatorade, and, what are you talking about? There's no resources out there, it's just country out there. You know, if the Summit General Store got a little coroplast sign and stuck it in the ground next to the trail, they could be getting a bit more business. That's one very simple thing, you know, it'll cost them five bucks to do, and it'll pay for itself in the first few hours on a nice summer weekend. Make it clear at businesses and other amenities, that bicyclists are welcome there. If they see bicycle parking, they're going to know this is a place where they want my business. This is a photo of a street in Somerville, Massachusetts, where they, the city said, you know what, we've got a lot of places for people to park their cars, not a whole lot of places where people can park their bikes, we're going to put in this bike parking corral, and now we can have ten people park where one person could park before. And all around the country, cafes and restaurants are clamoring for this sort of thing, because it knows, people know it's going to bring them more business. Keeping their safety in mind with on-street infrastructure, this is an example of what's sort of the new in vogue for bike lanes, and we've got bike lanes here in Coventry. This is the next generation, it's called a parking-separated bike lane, so the cyclist is going between the curb and the parked cars, and the moving motor vehicles are not adjacent to the cyclists. So, got that extra distance protecting cyclists, for the motorists, motorists aren't worried about the cyclists weaving in and out and swerving, and so it's better for everybody. And another layer of how it's an advantage is for pedestrians crossing a street, the start of moving vehicles is an additional ten feet out into the middle of the road, so a pedestrian can walk nearly twenty feet out into the street before they're in danger of getting hit by a car. And of course, the highest sort of infrastructure for keeping cyclists and pedestrians safe is the shared-use path. This is a picture of the East Bay Bike Path, and this is touching again on the economic advantages. You know that Dells and the ice cream shop in the background there would not be there if it weren't for the bike path. That's what keeps those businesses in business, as resources for people in the neighborhood, as well as resources for people coming from all over the place, all over New England, really, to use the East Bay Bike Path. And I want to use this image as a bit of a segue. This is in California, where the cafe that was built alongside the rail trail also has a bike shop for simple repairs, because people going on this, on a ride, either pack their stuff with them, or call for help, or they know that there's a place within a reasonable walk where they can get a simple repair. You don't have greenway cycles anymore. When I moved to Rhode Island, I would go out on rides on the Washington Secondary Rail Trail. At the time, not a lot of it was built, and I was biking on this like, sort of muddy path, there would be tadpoles swimming out of the way in front of me, until I got to the first mile and a half of the Coventry Greenway was built at the time, and I knew that this was just about a hundred yards from the trail. So if I was having trouble, if I needed some, if I had a flat tire, anything, I knew I could go to Coventry Cycle, or Greenway Cycle. But, private enterprise doesn't always come through for us the way we want it to. If there was a big enough call for a new bike shop here, somebody would have gone back in and created a bike shop and have another successful business. So what some towns are doing is building what are they called, community bike shops. This was one, it was built out of an old shipping container, it's called the Red Shed. It's in Olneyville, and it's on city park land, so it was all done with the cooperation of the City Parks and Rec Department. It has somewhat limited hours, but people in the neighborhood know that on weekends and certain summer evenings, their kid can go down there to get their flat fixed. They also run a summer camp out of the Red Shed, so another opportunity for kids to learn and maybe even get on track towards a trade. A qualified bike mechanic these days makes about fifteen to seventeen dollars an hour, so it's a legitimate choice for, for kids who are, who are looking for, for different avenues of ways to go, and it's a great summer camp, too. And, and also a place where skills classes can be run from, a place to gather and go out on the trail, and it's not about learning how to balance, it's about learning how to ride when other people are around, for your own safety, for other people's safety, and that's how we get to the next generation of kids who can, who can, you know, as their parents grit their teeth, like I do with my daughter, get their kids out on the streets to do things like bike to school. I walked to school my whole childhood, and I'm guessing that most, if not all of you walked or biked to school when you were kids, and I'm guessing that today, in the town of Coventry, very few of kids in your schools are walking or biking to school, particularly biking to school. So that's another thing that would be great to work towards. Of course, it's not just about the skills, but it's about the quality of the streets and the infrastructure on the street, making sure that we can maximize that safety. But more kids biking to school means kids arriving ready to learn. There are studies that demonstrate quite clearly that getting exercise before school has great positive effects on a kid's ability to concentrate, even more so than having a good breakfast. Having breakfast before school is great, but it pales in comparison to the benefit of having exercise before school, and that's really important. So I want to point out some things that the town has done really well. There's your spine for bike, for a bike network in the town of Coventry, in the Coventry Greenway. Seeing its proximity to important local assets, the town already on its own built an extension to come to the library and across Flat River Road up to the, some of the annex across the street, also some playing fields up there. The town ought to be looking for other opportunities to take advantage of proximity to the Greenway. You've got Dave's Fresh Marketplace quite close, and just to the west of there are the playing fields where this has already been done, there's already a sort of little side path that comes down to those playing fields. You've got the middle school, other playing fields, and to do a little planning study to see how, how cyclists could be brought from the Greenway safely to these other destinations would be a good use of time and resources. And I also want to talk about tourism, this is another way to bring people in, it's about local tourism, state tourism, but also national tourism. The Coventry Greenway is part of the East Coast Greenway, and within the next few years will also be part of the US Bike Route One, which is, that's a national designation just like US Route One or US Route forty-four, run out of the same office at US DOT, in fact. And having themed events to bring people in, such as this one, which was all about touring one farm to the next and learning, talking to the farmers, learning about what they're doing, history tours, stopping at historic sites to learn more about the heritage of an area, but also events like races. This is an event that used to happen up in Providence, it's moved to Thompson, Connecticut, a cyclocross festival. Cyclocross is a type of bike racing, sort of looks like road bikes, but they're out on the dirt and grass, and it's the most, it's the fastest-growing segment of bike racing, it's also the most fan-friendly and family-friendly, doesn't always have to be a big production like this. In West Warwick at Riverpoint Park, they've actually built a one-point-five-mile permanent course, and there are, people go there to practice, kids that go there to learn how to do this, because it's super fun, and there are regional races that happen there, so people come there from all over New England and as far as New York to participate in, for instance, Ice Weasels, which is one of the last events of the year, it's bitterly cold, there's snow and ice, and the people are there going crazy, having a wonderful time. Sometimes people are racing in costumes, because that makes it even more fun, and that is part of the, what makes it so fan-friendly and family-friendly as well, the fact that people don't take it so seriously. So, bringing it all back together, and wrapping, tying a bow on this, investments pay off, and some of those investments are pretty low, putting up a bike parking Putting up a bike parking pitching post in front of a cafe or a store, or a bike parking corral, the costs to paint bike lanes. And as I hope I've demonstrated, the economic benefits come back to the town. With that, I'd be happy to entertain questions, if there are any.
I'll open it up to the council, if there's any questions. Mr. Weiss at this time?
The only comments. The only question I have, much of the bike path runs along State Route 117. How is, how is it getting the, you know, it's trying to get a bike lane on, on a state road?
Yeah, for sure, working with, with DOT, that's another layer, it's a little challenging sometimes. I will say this, Rhode Island DOT, under the current administration, my experience has been that it's, they're easier to work with now. They've got more staff dedicated to bicycling and walking now than they have in the past. And I don't know where they came up with the money to do that, but that's, you know, that's where we are. And right now is a really great time to start thinking about it, because the state planning, statewide planning, which has been under the Department of Administration, recently awarded a contract for a new statewide bike plan. And that's probably going to get started in the month of August. There will be meetings around the state, and this is a good opportunity for the town of Coventry to come to the table and say, you know, we, we want to take advantage of this new bike plan, to look at our local roads and our state roads, see how we can connect to other towns, how we can connect our neighborhoods with our schools and our commercial districts, things like that.
Yeah, I got a question. Have you had an opportunity to meet with our parks and rec director and sit down and talk with her as well? I'm just thinking, I'm looking at the, to get out, I'm looking at the total hours and, you know, amount of money, it can't be worse for us, you know, as far as coming up with money. And I was thinking maybe start in small steps, maybe work in coordination with our parks and rec director, maybe behind Plainfield, pull a bike shop or something, you know, start off small rather than, good ideas, but, you know, $4,000, you know, is a lot of money, too, you know, initially, and I, I don't know, how long it's going to be used in town, I really don't, I have my reservations about it.
Sure. Nobody, nobody would expect any town. I certainly, as, as a taxpayer in my city, I, I wouldn't, I would be aghast if an investment were made without proper study first, making sure it was, it was desirable. I have met Raina, we've chatted a little bit, and we've got some ideas of conversations we want to have, and identified other people with specific expertise who we'd want to talk with, including the people who founded that community bike shop that I showed you some photos of.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I think this is great. I mean, I would love to see this coming from northern Virginia, where you could ride out to Dulles Airport and back, which in my younger days I did. That, this is just something that could bring a lot of people in, and be really exciting, races and events and stuff, and I would love, I mean, I think if we look at grants and maybe impact fees to fund this, that would be where we could do that, as opposed to, because I'd rather see $4,000 go to this than a one-night event that not everybody can participate in. So I, I think if we really look at this, this could be just dynamite for the town. And, and, you know, for the residents, too, and give something back to the taxpayers would be great. So, thank you.
So, if I could address that point. The Champlin Foundation is, is the first thing that comes to mind when it comes to, you know, putting up a, a building. Not that I know anybody at the Champlin Foundation, not that I've had that conversation, but having a sizable foundation dedicated to the state of Rhode Island, who's clear about wanting to help put up structures, and compounding that with it being health-related and child-related, makes it a really good candidate.
And I don't know if you've been on the bike path, I'm sure Raina has. There's a blue building, apparently it's got historical significance, but it's now owned by Rideot, I think. And they've talked about what to do with, there's going to be a tourism, it was going to be a stop on the bike path, it's right there at Hill Farm. And if you could work with statewide planning or Rideot, possibly use that building for one of, you know, the classes, the, the bike shop kind of idea, it's just sitting there now. I mean, that's something else that you, you all could look at, you know. There's, I think there's a lot of opportunities and buildings that we could utilize in town that aren't being used right now. Mapledale School, maybe, before it falls, before it falls apart, but it's just.
Certainly if there's a building available, and it's, you know, not full of asbestos, and, you know, the wiring's up to code and all this sort of stuff, and it's also adjacent to the Greenway, I mean, that's, what a resource to dig around.
If I could just add my two cents is that I was at the ribbon-cutting ceremony out at the Summit General Store, I forget, was it last year or the year before? Two years ago, had some dignitaries up from, I believe it was Virginia, came up and partook in the ceremony. Riders came all the way from other New England states to celebrate this last leg of our Greenway. And I, I can only concur with you that a lot were going into the Summit Store, buying snacks, sodas, paraphernalia, and that, that was, just for that one hour, was a shot in the arm. And we do have a, a lot of nice acreage. Our Greenway, I guess, is the finest in, not only Rhode Island, but probably the Northeast. I, I heard this years ago, when I spoke to Guy LeFave, and I think it can be a real shot in the arm, and I think it's worth the effort, certainly health-wise. I, I confess, I have one bicycle that's in my shed, hasn't been used in about 10 years. In fact, I think mine was given away, and my wife's is there, but you know what? That little bike shop was within a mile of my house, and, and I did take a couple times my kids' bikes there. And when it closed and went to some other type of druggery, but I, I felt sad. And there's no reason with 35,000 people in Coventry that we can't have one bicycle repair shop besides Benny's, which is also my district. But I, I thank you for coming out and sharing this information. I got to ask, are you working with other cities and towns in Rhode Island right now? Or would this be like a first for Rhode Island for us and you?
Well, it would be the first for connection here. I am a subcontractor, a subconsultant on the state's long-range transportation plan and the state's bicycle mobility plan, which I mentioned earlier.
Dealing with Rhode Island?
Six eight again?
Yeah, you're dealing with the state of Rhode Island?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm also the, the past, I have a lot of experience working with municipalities. I was the chair of the Providence Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. I'm a subconsultant for the town of Simsbury in Connecticut, which has a lot of parallels to Coventry.
Yeah.
And...
Well, I know if the League of Cities and Towns invited you, they must think a lot of you and what you could do for the state of Rhode Island, and certainly why not start a Coventry, so. I have no other comments at this time. Mr. Waters? And I want to thank Mr. Weiss for coming, I guess.
The, the only thing I would say is that I had wanted this presentation done to help create client from the council, to help present a vision for the town. I asked that, the, the next item on the agenda is the resolution, I asked that you support the resolution. It's sort of a nod to this whole idea, this whole vision, to help, help bring more bicycling events and economic development that's based around bicycling, which is something that's already firmly planted in the town. So, as you consider the resolution, that's the next item on the agenda, I ask you to think about that.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. All right, well, as Mr. Waters led us in...